...for the lives of innocent Americans. To the republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A. B. C. Joey Hall Road, please.
Mr. Bellinger.
Here.
Ms. Prieta. Mr. Hatmaker.
Here.
Mr. Kidd.
Here.
Mayor St. G.
Here. You got a copy of your means from Morse's descendants meeting, most clear to council?
Motion approved, Mayor.
Have a motion, have a say.
Say.
Have a say in Colorado, please.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Mr. Kidd.
Yes.
Motion carries. Number five, you have reports from your board's commision department. Most clear to council.
Motion approved.
Have a motion, have a say.
Say.
Have a say in Colorado.
Mr. Bellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker.
Yes.
Mr. Kidd.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm number six, any comments from citizens? Nobody being done? Number seven announces, Kay, you have some papers you want to put into January?
Yes, sir. We have an auction on surplus property. We should add declaring certain items surplus by vote. And the utilities has two vehicles, two trucks that they put up for us that they go on surplus. We've looked at them. And they're four-wheel drives, Johnny's looked at them. And we'd like to get permission to buy them for $1,800 each. And surplus, our old two orange trucks that we've got that's been better days. I know we didn't discuss this in the workshop, but this just came up all of a sudden. We'd ask for approval for that. And that's all I have.
John, you want to elaborate on those trucks? How you going to pay for them and see if it's okay to hurry?
Yeah, I have $10,000 in the capital outlay. But the bids I gave you come in on the parking lot at six, so I could use that money to capital outlay, the extra 4,000. If the council approves it, to do that with.
Can we use it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, John. Kay, what else would you like to say?
That's all I have.
How much surplus stuff you have, Kay?
Oh, we have about, I'm sorry, I don't have a ledge here. Go ahead, Beth, got about 25 cars. Your chief, or chief, you have something in there, don't you?
Yes, I remember why it is, Dean. I have some stuff.
Oh, Jim, you don't have anything. And Johnny, do you have anything?
I've got the two vehicles and some doors that came out of the library that I'm going to put in.
And I think Joey Beth, they've got some old computer equipment. We'll give you the list, we'll have a list of all this in the paper.
What else, what else you got to come out of the library?
We've got some stuff that we can use, like those treaty posts. Mainly the doors is about, about the only thing I have. And we're not able to use them for anything, so.
Those interior doors?
Yes.
None exterior?
No.
What about the cabinets, vanities, and stuff like that?
Some of the vanities we used in the cabinets, I guess Paul, I don't know, we didn't get those. I don't know if he took what was done for Paul.
Mr. Administrator, can you find out where our cabinets are? The ones that was removed?
Yes.
Yes. That's a great question, yes.
That's about, that's about the only thing I have, is those doors. All the other stuff I can use in the park.
Is there anything Johnny, have East LaFollette, we're trying to get rid of?
Not at this point, I don't have anything.
Let me give you an enlightened on the cabinets, Mr. Moats. I don't know if he hauled any of them off or not, but I told Paul, if he couldn't get rid of them, to call Jim and have Jim to haul them off. And I don't know why everybody keeps hollering about the cabinets. The cabinets have been in there for 25 years. And they wasn't, they're handmade, hand-built. And they weren't, I looked at them. They're bad enough, I wouldn't take to put them in my basement to store stuff in. That's how bad it was when they got down. So I told Paul, I said, Paul, if it was me, if I couldn't get, if I couldn't get them to somebody to haul them off, then have Jim to bring his truck down here and throw them in the back of the truck, take them to the dump. So that, if that means anything to you, that's where your cabinets went.
Well, that's, you know, that's part of the surplus property and stuff, you know, we have to go down with the surplus here, you know, you can't just give it away. You know, what you and I may not use someone else's light.
Yeah. We may need to go back after our dump, then get them lights that we took down, that were struck down out of the building outside. And I tried to give them to Mike. I told Paul, I said, Paul, call Mike, I said, and Joe, I said, maybe they want these old lights. And if they don't, I said, take them to the dump. So I don't know if they, if he called you and told them or not, but.
I have no use for it.
You haul them off, Jim?
I didn't, not being, I just sent the men out there and said, haul off whatever Paul says he's got.
Okay.
I didn't end before it was sold off.
And I think we've got some excess concrete out there, it's laying there, and some rocks.
They've digged it today.
Did you get them today?
I got them digged today.
Did you haul them off?
Yep, but I know where they done.
You know where you dumped them at, if we catch, we need them. Okay.
I don't understand, Mr. Hatmaker. You know, neither I nor Mr. Kidd, it takes three people on this council to give the taxpayers' property away.
Well, it depends on what you mean by property. If it's something that ain't worth nothing, does it make any difference?
Yes.
Oh, it does? It does to you, it's not to me.
Like I said, you're one of Pete and Sarah.
Jim, do you go through all this procedures when you could decide to haul something to the dump? Or is it just the library itself?
That's what I thought. In a staff meeting, we talked about any, anything with the department heads that we're going to get rid of, that's of any value at all, get the council to clearance surplus.
Right.
And I discussed that in the last staff meeting. And so that's the policy we were following.
Hey, Kay, do these cars you're putting in the sale, do they run?
Yes. Got a BMW, probably go for about $50,000.
$6,000? You lower price a whole lot for them, about $5,000?
Sir?
You lower the price a whole lot for them, about?
Well, this public auction, whatever about, whatever goes, goes, you know, you have to change the bid on it like everybody else.
Where, for the revenue, I didn't get any lights for no work. I got plenty of lights, I can even, we're bucks, we're down on that.
I haven't gotten any either. I'd like to also add something to the agenda. Mayor, I'd like to ask this council to vote, to have a complete audit done on the library project by an independent auditor, other than one that the city's been using.
I'll second that motion. Yeah. Terry, we, it's probably, we probably don't trust you enough to, for your figures, I guess that's what they're after, I don't know. But it'd be good for, there's nothing wrong with having or not of the library. I can see right now, I ain't going to make a part of it. But it's just going to cost more money. But I guess the taxpayers got it. You know? Okay, let's move on. Under administrations, approved invoice for administrative fees for McCarthy-Hossapple McCarthy for the library, furniture and fixtures, Kate?
Did you all see the letter in your bunks today from the library, from Mr. Johnson? Anyway, we had a bill for $6,000 and for ordering the furniture. It was in a bid package for, and all the stuff too. And I, and all I had from the council was to approve, what was it, $60,000 for library stuff. And all the vote was made to do that. Well, then we get this bill for $60,000. And we didn't sign it, not yet, because we wrote it. And we got a letter today. Has anybody got the copy?
It was in the box.
Let me read it.
Have you got the copy? Can I do that? Can you read? Yes, sir. This is addressed to me. And after Joey and I wrote the letter, questioned, this came today. This letter is response to your letter dated March 13, 2012. I am sorry for misunderstanding regarding our fee for the specifications for the furniture for the new public library. I was not to meet him when the furniture budget was approved, but I thought that the attached document stated January 5, 2012, was the basis of the approval of $60,000. I had delivered this document to Library Director Irving. As you can see, the total of 59,433 includes a specification of $6,000. My assumption was that when the budget was approved, the fee was as well. We have to, much time required to put together an appropriate package of furniture for the new library, which includes technical furniture, shelving, specialty items for the children room. Most of this was priced repetitively for purpose, to highly discounted state contracts, so the civil public will get the best value for its tax dollars. I hope we can correct this by your review of the attached budget sheet. I have placed an authorization line at the bottom of this letter. If you and the administration approve, we will proceed with your signature below. If this is not possible, I would like to suggest that perhaps the full $6,000 be appropriated. The appropriation go to the furniture purchase for the library, and the library's friends could direct their funding to the specific fee. So he's saying here, I would suggest that perhaps the full $60,000 of the appropriated fund go to the furniture purchase for the library, and the library's friends could direct the funding, the funding of the specific fee. We have gone beyond professional standards on this project in our own passion to help the citizens follow and get a good and better functioning library. I trust we can work this situation now. Please contact me if you have any questions. Just Johnson.
So, now what did you say in there about part of the package? What'd he say about the package?
He said, as you can see, the total. I had delivered this document to Library Director Irving. As you can see, the total of 59,433 includes a specification fee of $6,000. My assumption was that when the budget was approved, the fee was as well. We did approve, y'all did approve $60,000 for furniture. Terry and I, and we looked at it, and we want to do what, we want to pay everything we're supposed to pay. And, but it didn't say anything about paying additional $6,000, because we paid him approximately $50,000. And you would think, now he's a very professional engineer, does a good job, they've done libraries all over the country. But I didn't feel comfortable, and Terry didn't either, about authorizing this, since we didn't, it wasn't approved by voice vote out here. So that's where we're at. Now, we can give another thing. Terry, the $6,000 actually put us over.
Your, the first five purchase orders we wrote for furniture fixtures totaled about $55,326. And then if you, if you pay the $6,000, that puts it at about a little over 61. And then we had, after that, we had another purchase order, four furniture fixtures come in for $8,000 plus. So either way, you're going to be over the 60 with those last two items.
We got additional $8,000?
Yep, Kate's got it.
For what?
It's additional, it's additional shelving.
Uh-huh, additional shelving, shelf and panels, and computer OPEC stations.
So just with, just with.
Why would he not send that to us at the very beginning, when he sent us the $6,000 bill? They were sent, they, his assistant on this, her name is Pam, she went through state contracts and got best bids for all this, and this is at the time they sent the bid to her. She's foreign and unknown, it's just the time of the people she was dealing with. I saw, let me ask you this. I saw one particular item on there, a desk with a pull-out door, it's $1,800. That seems pretty high for a desk. Look at that itemized bill.
Kay?
Want to question, sir?
Look at that itemized bill, and see about, there's a desk on there that costs $1,800?
Yes.
Desk, we turn with one drawer pedestal, $1,800, at the director's office. Lateral fire, blah, 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 and spaceless. Well, we, you know, it's, we've gone first class over $4,650 per office, reading room.
It seems, it seems to me that we, we're just haphazardly doing things, just like the concrete up here for the sidewalks. I mean, it doesn't look like it's got any fiber in it, no, there were no specifications written for that concrete at all. We should have had at least state specifications for that concrete for those sidewalks. I dare to say that in five or six years, we'll probably be reporing those. I bet he used 3,000 mix, those contractors did. I mean, somebody's got to be in charge. We can't just let everybody that wants to start ordering things. I mean, if you turn me loose like that, I'd order the most elaborate thing I could get.
Our biggest problem is.
If nobody oversees it.
In this case, we have, we have a man here that's supposed to oversee it, is supposed to know what's going on.
I'm talking about furniture, I'm talking about concrete, I'm talking about other things that go on here. I mean, we got to get a handle on that.
We, we budgeted $300,000 for the library. Terry, what are we owing the library now?
Total. Okay, I'll give you, let me see, I got it here. Okay, including what we've actually spent, and this is through March the 9th, and there'll probably be some, a little extra. This includes the main roof for $88,400, includes the concrete for $22,900, and the cabinetry for Morse's Cabinet. That makes $305,000. Then we took, we bought the, purchased the Masford Roof, and the gutters and downspouts were $78,385, which come out of community service funds. You add those together, that makes 382,910, we're about at $383,000. We've actually paid architect fees from the beginning around $50,000. So that puts you, if you add all that together, of course, that's in different parts of the capital outlay, parts in community service, part of it's in the library building account. We're right at somewhere about $433,000.
How many outstanding bills you have out there, Terry? Any outbill?
We know we've got handrails.
We've got handrails coming in, but we'll have some extra contract services for Mr. Begley. And I think we've got some outstanding, some small ones for maybe the ceiling, maybe the ceiling tile. I've got a few purchase orders sitting out there still, and I think we want to buy, I said, we've got a purchase order for flares for about 900, or flight toll and flights whatever, about 900. That's as of last week.
So you're probably, you're probably looking at the 450, the 450,000?
Probably, yeah, that's, that's approximately, yeah. And that does not include, and of course, the furniture, of course, that does include the furniture fixtures, that's, that's in addition to the 433,000.
Have we, have we received any of these shelves, these desks, and all this furniture? We received anything? That's going to be the last step in the libraries, they're going to come and stop them. Has it been ordered?
It, the first, the first file.
If it could be changed, my suggestion would be, tell Mr. Johnson to reorder some stuff, and let's get this 6,000 down, within the 60,000, and we go from there.
I think it's done being ordered, Terry.
The 55,000 has already been ordered with deposit, that was five companies. It's been ordered with five, with five, it's not deposits, not paid for, but all five have required a deposit, because a lot of it, some of it's going to be made from scratch.
I never, Terry, I didn't bring a bid out here on this, because I didn't see it until a week ago. I don't know whose fault it was, but it should have come to me, and Terry, asking for it was all important, in my opinion, with approval from you. But that's all right, we, he did do it. He got state bids, which was real important. We, you know, he got, what am I saying, state bids, state contract.
Yes.
I think that we probably, our mistake was that we didn't have one person, one person approving. We would get the purchase, we would get the requisition, and then it's done, be ordered. So that's part of my fault, I'll take responsibility for it. It will not happen in the future. If anybody sends something through without our approval, I'll take administrative actions.
So, Mayor, I, I make a motion that we have appropriated $60,000, and that's what we allow.
Have a motion, have a say. Can I, is that?
We've already appropriated that.
It's obvious appropriate, no more, not $6,000.
What I'm, what I'm, the motion I make is we stay within that budget item of $60,000 on furniture and fixtures.
Is that, is that just, just furniture, and that's just purchases, right? No fees? Is that what you mean?
Right.
Okay. Have a motion, have a say.
I really don't know what your name is. I won't, you know, we, we appropriated.
That, what he, go ahead.
We appropriated $60,000, and looks like it's going to, from what Terry's saying, it's going up to about $69,000, to $70,000, right?
It would be, it would be, right now, we've ordered 55, we have another purchase order for eight, that'd put it, eight plus, that'd put it at 64, not counting the $6,000 fee.
So maybe if you put all that in there, it'll be over $70,000.
Have a motion, have a say, Colorado.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
I'd like to, I'd like to know a little more about this before I vote on. But now, is this 60,000, is what we're talking about in the workshop?
Yes, it's just furniture fixtures, yes.
That's not going to be enough to finish the job, guys?
We're not talking about finishing the job, Andrew. We're talking about, it's all we're going to appropriate, just the 60,000.
So we're going to come back and, and whatever it takes, and finish the job up?
We'll have to, if we can. I just hope, I just hope we can get it made by year this month.
What we, what we did, Mr. Hatmaker, way back when this project first started, before it even got off the ground, Mr. Saxon and I met with some friends of the library here. And they specifically told us that if we appropriated $300,000 for anything that's built out there, that they would be glad to fund the furnishes. And we went beyond that.
Well, I'm sure that, and their intentions are probably good, but it's like, we're just as much responsible as they are, or maybe more. But their intentions is good, but if the money don't come in, they're not going to pay it out of their pocket, because it's the city. And not only that, you're talking about $100,000 share for a roof, that we, we added on, part of, took part of their money and added on to the rec center. And went all around, and, but it's still taxpayers' money, the way you look at it.
We took, we took some money in above that, $300,000 out of the community funds on the Masford Roof and stuff.
And we had $100,000, Joe, before you ever came on board, we had $100,000 already appropriated to Mr. Bird's there, to put a new roof on the, on the rec center. We turned around and took the $100,000 out of the $300,000. So you appropriated $300,000 to the library, but you used $100,000 of it to do a roof that was 20-year-old. We done used it up.
No, we didn't use the $100,000 out of the $300,000.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
88,400.
Oh.
It is in, the 8.
What'd you do with that other $100,000, Johnny?
I'm not, I did.
Well, where's the other $100,000?
Huh?
You said we took his $100,000.
We did, we had $100,000 appropriated for it. That's what the first bid come in from Dixie Brooklyn.
We should have used it then.
Okay, 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 okay.
We was waiting on you to tell us how to use it.
Andrew, that's, come on, listen.
And you got elected, come on board, and we, we used it.
Hey, we want to finish that library. I lived there, it's a beautiful building, they're great and set it up. I'm sure it'll last, outlive all of us at library, will. So let's go ahead, I got a motion, say.
What Terry and I need is an approval, or not approval, we're not going to pay $8,000 or $6,000 until three people tell us to pay it.
Kay, wait, we've got a motion here to pay the $60,000 for the furniture and fixtures. Let's go ahead, have a motion, say, and Colorado. Just give us a word, please.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, under administrative, again, approved invoice for administrative fees for McCarthy-Hossapple McCarthy for the library fixtures, that's $6,000. What's the clear statement, $6,000? What's that sum?
The $6,000 that each tour is just buying and stuff.
For Mr. Johnson?
It's one of $6,000.
I, I think in this letter that Mr. Saxon read, you know, if it would get that money in on the furniture, that he would forego that, which I think we just did, that come out of the $60,000.
His $6,000, that comes out of $60,000, that means we're going to short some furniture and fixtures?
No, no. I think if Mr. Saxon read the letter, then that he was going, as long as we give that in on furniture, he's going to fine it. Or did I misinterpret what you said?
He still gets $6,000, okay. Okay. We got a bill here for $6,000 for professional services. We also got another bill for $8,000 for additional shelving, which I'm sure is needed. And we're over $60,000. And we don't have the authority, Terry and I don't have the authority to write any checks unless somebody directs us to.
They've got, they've got, if they, if all the furniture comes in to be ordered out of the 60, they still have got about almost, almost $4,700 left out of the 60 for something, which could actually go on part of the $8,000.
I think what Joe said was that in his letter, he said that if we would appropriate the full 60 for furniture only, which you just did, and then that, I think he says here, the library's friends can direct their funding to the specification fee out of it. The way I read, he's going to look to them for the fee.
He also had the main fee in $6,000.
There's not, there's not that. I think, we've heard that they offered paid the $6,000, I got that from a break there. Where they, I don't know where they got the money.
That's just the way I read the letter, I mean, I don't know if that's what he's saying.
Anything, anything that Mr. Johnson orders from, I mean, from here on, he's going to charge us for doing that.
That's where you, we're going to.
He's going to charge whatever the total cost for furnishings and the construction of the building, whatever that total thing, it's just like the engineers that did the bridge out here, Pleasant Bridge. They charged us for Jim and his men doing work, even though we paid them, because that was the total cost of the project. You remember that? Whatever Dennis Potter, his men did furnishing the gravel, they charged us for the gravel. So we need to be careful at what we asked Mr. Johnson to order. If there's anything we can order, we need to do it. But we don't need more personnel. Somebody needs to be in charge and oversee what's going on. I'm for finishing this library, we've got to the point to where it, it needs to be finished, I've been for it all along. I knew it would cost a little bit more than $300,000, because anytime you get into a building project, you might as well figure about 20% additional cost. well figure about twenty percent additional cost above what you appropriate. I mean, that's just, that's just a natural fact, that it's going to cost you more than that. But we're running into a little bit more than what I thought, uh, even though we've done a lot of work, but it's something we can be proud of, but I mean, you know, it seemed to me like we've gone a little bit elaborate with some things. Uh, I mean, you know, I, I was a school administrator for twenty-five years, worked in the central office down here for sale, I never had a desk that cost eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, you know, that's all I'm saying, we just need to watch and don't go as elaborate as what we could, we need to get it finished and, and, uh, and move on and get it open. It's something we can all be proud of, but I think we've made a few mistakes down the road, but I mean, hindsight's twenty-twenty.
Something we can live with.
Uh, it's something we can live with, uh, but, uh-
Could I make a request, David?
Yeah.
I would request that we not pay the six thousand, if he wants to collect it, collect it from the friends of the library. And I keep making motion, and according to his letter, that's what he's indicating, he will do.
That, that's what I was referring to a while ago.
But-
Wait a minute.
We need to watch about what he does in the future.
Why would you make such a judgment? Give me your reasons, why you say that?
Because friends of the library has some money. We know they have some money, we don't know how much. Uh, it was approved, but the question is, you never approved the six, you're over the sixty thousand dollars anyway, that you want, if you want a motion to go over the sixty thousand and get a bone on it, we'll write the check in a minute. But he has indicated right here that he would get basically his money from the friends of the library, that's what he said, his six thousand. That still will take care of the eight thousand that's, that's out there for shelving, so we got to come up with money for it. And-
Well, do you think this, this library is, is for the friends of the library, do you think it's for the city?
That's not the question, I don't care if he, if he wanted to give sixty thousand, if he wanted to pay it, I do not care. I'm just telling you that his letter said he would get his money from the, from the friends of the library.
He's going to be one way or the other, either from us or from friends of the library.
It's not that I'm trying to take anything from friends of the library.
I understand, I know what Kate's saying, uh, if I could say something, that Mr. Johnson, there won't be any more furniture expenses from him at all, this, this does finish it. If we could pay, if you all could agree to pay the eight thousand that we still need for the shelf and panels and the OPAC stations, and Terry says we still have, it'll just be around four thousand by the time he pays, he said we had almost forty-seven hundred left when he, you know, after this. So if we could pay, if you all could vote to pay the eight thousand, I have my treasurer here for the friends group, Clyde, and he can tell you if we could possibly scrape up the money to pay Mr. Johnson his six thousand.
Maybe Mr. Johnson would be gracious enough, since we've paid him quite a bit, to just forget about that six thousand.
I don't think he'll be that gracious. But Clyde, do you think we could handle that six thousand?
He's got a pretty good fee, that thing, nobody's going to pay a thousand dollars. There's no way we're going to pay a thousand dollars.
No, I think Mr. Johnson's six.
Oh, the six. Oh, no, there've been so many different numbers, that the six thousand for his original architect fees was in the sixty thousand that they approved.
Right.
Now they've decided that it's only for furniture.
Right.
So even when they approved the sixty thousand that was on the, the original proposal, they've now changed the, the, the rules of the game.
No, we did not change it, they changed the rules.
Well, it was on, it was on the, the list of total charges, sixty thousand.
It's on, it's, it's, it's true, it's on the list. Nobody's seen the list.
They weren't aware of it.
Nobody's seen the list.
Okay.
So Terry, if, of the eight thousand that's still remaining, we've got enough to pay how much of it right now?
Uh, almost, almost forty-seven hundred.
Okay, so that would leave us about thirty-three hundred that you all would still need to appropriate, finish up the furnishes, not worrying about Mr. Johnson's fee.
I'll make a-
Just if you could appropriate a note to.
Okay.
So we can get these furnishing finished, and then we're having a book sale this weekend, I don't expect we'll raise six thousand dollars, but we're going to do all we can.
Okay, Joe, okay, Joe, let's see what your motion is, what we can, just what your-
I'll make a motion that we finish funding the eight thousand dollars, which, whatever amount-
It'd be about thirty-three hundred.
Whatever amount that we need.
No, it'd be a little bit more than that, it's like eight plus, it'd be, it'd be right at maybe four thousand or a little, just whatever the bounty is, it's about, it's closer to four thousand, plus or minus.
Question, have we already appropriated money for the handrails?
Yeah, appropriated money for the handrails, you had appropriated money for, for the rest of the ceiling on the inside, where the, where they be done, or put hot water tank, it's section there, which is only probably two, three hundred dollars, but, uh, Kate and I looked at it, and, uh, he agreed that it needed to be done, so we paused, and, uh-
We got the supply.
Yeah, we got the material, it's just a matter of paying the labor, and, uh-
We don't have a, we don't have a bid on the handrails yet.
You don't, and you also don't have a seal on your sign.
I'll make comment.
Yeah.
The sign, we're drawing it up ourselves, and Jim Mullins and Johnny Birds are putting it up, so we won't give a bill for Mr. Johnson, Johnson. Uh, the handrails, we was hoping that we would have bids opening today, but the two people that bid on it said it went enough time, so we extended it for two weeks from yesterday. And I would like to ask the council a adjournment session or something, where the, when we open them bids, that you can order and get them started, and I'm shooting, we're shooting as early in, uh, May as possible to have a grand opening on that.
Joe, what was your motion?
I think what Ms. Green was saying, if we finish funding the eight thousand dollars on the shelving, that last invoice that came in, that the friends of the library could possibly come up to the sixty, six thousand or sixty-one hundred, whatever it is, uh, we've got, well, forty-seven hundred left in the-
You got about forty-seven.
Hundred, in the, in the six thousand, uh, or sixty thousand, so it would be an appropriation. Did you get the figure?
No, it's eight, no, I, I, Kate, I think Kate's got the PO, it's eight, it's eight thousand plus, I'm not sure it's exact, sure of the exact amount, it's eight thousand.
And around that way, it'd be close to four thousand dollars, right, right around four thousand dollars, whatever it takes to lead to.
And not worried about Mr. Johnson, right?
Right.
Okay. You make that a motion?
I have, yeah.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a second, call the road.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number two, change the flea market funds to benefit the amphitheater, funds currently go to the library fund. We discussed this in a workshop, first, council.
Let me interject for a second, Mayor.
Okay, what?
I don't think we ought to change that at this point, until the end of the budget year. I don't think you ought to change it midstream or three-quarters of the way into it. Let's just, if we're going to do that, let's do it at the new, at the beginning of the budget, next year.
I think, I think what we said was, we discussed this when, when the library was finished or about finished, when Hans Ritter, you remember Hans Ritter?
That. Why would you take from a fund if you don't even have enough money to fund what the fund is for?
I would fund you pretty good tonight, you know.
Yeah. But, uh, uh, what kind of money are you looking at, huh?
From the flea market?
No, for you.
I have one, you're okay, you enjoy it, uh, with the wow.
And to start, you, you can't spend this money, no way, for that. This money is designated strictly for engineering and designing fee. If you look at the motion, when I made the motion, I made the motion that way so that it just wouldn't happen. It's only for designing and engineering fee, so you cannot use this money unless we come back and redo it and, and, and the whole thing all the way through.
We're going to have-
But as of right now, you've only got twenty-two hundred dollars in your flea market money.
We're going to have some engineering and design fees on the amphitheater.
It may pay us to, uh, to do like we're doing the rest, uh, stay away from any engineers and designers and do it ourselves. You'll save a lot of money.
It's kind of late now, what's it done?
I'm very late, I don't think-
I'm, I'm against doing anything with it, right, let's wait till, uh, budget.
But that's what we agreed on, that's okay, that's what we agreed on, huh?
So, uh, I don't remember what we agreed on.
Joe, you remember?
We took the flea money, I thought we took the flea money to allow the, the librarian to use that money, purchase items that she needed, uh, books and what, I didn't know you made a motion, I don't remember you making a motion to use for engineering.
When that happened, you wasn't here.
Yeah. Well, they, they act, they actually, they actually, I think, if you look at the minutes, they wanted to set up the library building account, which we did, just to get the library started. And of course, we, when we put the accounts in the budget, we put those accounts in there to pay for the, for things that we were paying for. Now, if you cha, you could, if you divert the money, it probably wouldn't go into that checking account, or, uh, like it is now, but if you do, what I was saying was, you would have to put some off, some different accounts on there if you're to, if you were going to use it for, for something other than architectural engineering, but you can do that. It's, it's up to you.
I think, I think when we, uh, moved that over, it was to start creating a building fund specifically for the library, and that's what time to get it from the library, and we got the library built, then funds will be returning back over.
It goes back into general fund, anyway, doesn't it, Terry?
We won't, we won't, we're-
Which one goes?
Two or three more months.
The la, the library building account is a, is a count group in the general fund.
Which, which the budget, Mike?
You've got that in the motion.
I need to get the motion.
I, I make a motion, we don't do anything with this flea market fund at this point.
I think it's likely to be.
Leave it like it is till the end of this budget year, and then let's go back and revisit that.
I have a motion, you say it.
I'll second that.
Say, call the road.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Under Police Department, approve a bid for utility vehicle thirteen thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and nine cents to Tommy's Motor Schools. What's the pleasure, council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid, Tommy's Motor Schools, thirteen six fifty-three ninety-nine. Uh, I talked to the police chief, and I think this bid come in with everything specified.
Yes, sir, as close as it, as, as close as it could, uh, it was the cheapest bid. We, we actually didn't receive a bid, um, we found out that they didn't, there was a couple of things on the specifications that we couldn't get, but, uh, we, uh, this came in the closest to what we had specified, and the cheapest, both.
Okay, I have a motion, you say it.
I've got a question.
Andrew.
Where's this money coming from?
It comes from Community United.
Huh?
Uh, I believe it was all come from Capitol.
Oh, we got it, Capitol, okay, we got it.
Well, that's what we recommended, I think, when you spoke about it at the workshop, back whenever it was.
How do you run, Terry? How much money is, uh, in the Capitol I pay now, if you take that thirteen thousand, uh, six hundred thirty-three dollars out of it?
About fifty, about fifty-six thousand, probably.
Fifty-six.
Some were right in there. And, and of course, uh, like I said, we've, we've still, we've still got some telephone system invoices to come in, I don't know exactly how many, they've not put that system in yet, yeah. Nancy, phone system, they've not put it in yet.
They, they were working it there.
Yeah, okay. So it, it could be fifty-six or a little bit less.
Now, uh, Mr. Caffers, you're going to use this vehicle on the trails and, and varying the times, uh, during the day and the night?
Yes, sir.
And maybe some of the downtown area?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, about, uh, twice every shift on the trails, and when it's completed up, tanks rains through, tanks rains through the rear alleys, uh, through both city parks, around by the ball fields at the rec center.
Now, you'd be varying, varying those times, uh, that you do that, I mean, you're not going to sit and just dig down on this time.
Yes, sir, no, so we're not going to set a specific time, we'll be varying the times that we do it, but it'll be twice, be, uh, six times a day, or in a twenty-four hour period.
Do you have any problem, Jimmy, awaiting, uh, on this to, and see if we do need this?
It's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Hatmaker.
That one I asked you. I asked you, do you have any problem awaiting on this to see if we really need it or not?
Jimmy, uh, Community Night Out is coming up pretty soon, we'll use it, it's some of our functions, right, city functions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, for the city functions, if we have a downtown thing, uh, for the National Night Out, uh, I think the city's already registered for that, uh, it's in the park over here, where, uh, I think they discussed that about trying to keep all the vehicles out of the park this year, the cars and stuff, uh, so-
We use, we use that Gay or Johnny's guy, the people who moved our goods in and out of the park, so we can use your ATVs to move stuff to, uh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion, you say it. Motion nights will have to say it. We made it that library, yes, we made it. Okay, now the recreation department, approve a bid for fencing labor, East End Field, Johnny, come on with her.
Okay. Try to make this sound. We went out to bid on the fence, you have a copy of that, uh, had one bid, class A fence, uh, he's did workforce before, never had any problem with it, so, came in at sixty-five hundred, that was to remove and dispose of the old fence and put up the new fence, and we're going to furnish materials for the new East Pollock complex.
Okay, you got to me, for the fencing industry, right, Charlie?
Yes, you all, you all appropriated the sixty-four thousand for that project, that's part of that.
Let's go ahead and make, tell me the war-
Where did Johnny?
The sixty-four thousand, that, that's the money that we, you all approved for that East Pollock park.
That come, where that money come from?
Where it went to come from?
Yeah?
You all-
Sixty-four thousand, where did sixty-four thousand come from that we appropriated for the rec center?
It was only due to you all.
I know that, but where'd it come from?
Community service fans.
Huh?
Community service fans.
That's right, okay, that's what I want you to say.
I was by over the day, they're making, we're taking that fence down, and we're making some progress on that sports complex, so when we get the rest of the old fence down, uh, and get that fixed out, I think it's going to be a good thing. And you, so the bid was for sixty thousand.
Sixty-five hundred.
Six thousand five hundred dollars in motion for that.
I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, play class, is that class A fence?
Yes, sir.
Uh, sixty-five hundred dollars for the recreation center.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second, no.
Call the road.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number two, approve the bid for striping the field department on the rec center.
Okay, you have that too, it's, uh, we went out to bid, received one bid from Rogers Group, uh, the portion for the rec center and across the street was fifty-five thirty-nine, and Jim figured it by the square foot to do in front of the library, there's another five hundred to do those two handicap spots, and reseal the, and stripe the front of the new library, so it all come together.
So total, Johnny, be six thousand three hundred nine dollars, right?
Six thousand thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, okay. Okay, what's the pleasure, council?
My motion is approved, six thousand thirty-nine dollars.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Call the road.
Mr. Bellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes. Motion carries. Public Works, confirmation firing paperwork, spraying fix-up, cleaning up, uh, do you want to elaborate on a little bit, since we've already started?
This is just what we've always done, I did not check to see if the county did deliver the, did it?
Tell her, yeah.
Okay. Uh, then, uh, people, uh, I think Peter and I talked about this, there will be an article in the, at least in, in the press, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to Mike or the people through Christian Journal, but there will be an article in the press, a news item, uh, declaring April cleanup fix-up month, tell them that this dumpster is back here. They can also call, as they always do, continue to call, our department and let us know if they have items that they need for us to pick up, uh, and we'll schedule that and get to it as soon as we can. So basically, that's, that's pretty much what it is.
Okay, thank you, Jim. What's the pleasure, council?
I know who we approved, make a motion.
Second.
Call, Rob.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion carries. I number two, to appropriate fines for, for used roller under ten thousand dollars. We discussed this in the workshop for Jim, uh, not to go over ten thousand dollars. What's the pleasure, council?
Where's this money coming from there? I was out of town, I, I believe.
I think the unit was about eighty-five hundred, something like that.
Yeah, well...
Depends which one you look at.
I think that unit, that, that piece of equipment is still available. It was Friday, uh, and I talked to him. Uh, he said if somebody came through with the cash, you know, of course, without something, the commitment, you can't ask a man to hold it, yeah? So, uh, it was still available then. I can check in the morning. If it's available, then that is my pick. Uh, Joe, it's a roller that's been in the rental fleet, only got a hundred twenty-five hours on it. Uh, same as the new roller, three foot wide, drum, double drum, vibrating with the water scrapers and the drum scrapers, uh, so on and so forth.
If, if it's, if it's over four thousand dollars, you give three quotes for it.
Well, how do you get?
I just, I'm just...
You still want to?
If it's between four and ten, nine thousand nine ninety-nine, we're supposed to get three, uh, try to get at least three quotes for one.
Oh, I can get plenty of quotes for a roller. Now, you can't get one, you can't get three quotes unless you buy a new one. We're exactly the same thing. So, uh, when you're looking at a used roller...
Ain't no big deal, gets you three quotes, uh, that's got, same thing, two, three times, you've got it.
Just tell, let Jim use.
I can get...
Don't tell Terry.
Let, let Jim use.
I can get quotes on three different machines in the same range, same approximate size, ballpark and all that, that would be comparable machines. I can get three quotes off the internet, just like that, you know, just in a few minutes, if that's what we need to do to make any... Okay.
Just eight, eight thousand five hundred.
That was what the machine was available for Friday.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's still available in the morning.
Jim, what are they going to bring you, like picking up a lot? What you're, what are they going to bring to us if we buy it, or?
No.
Me?
It's Wayne, W-H-A-Y-N-E, Supply, who is a caterpillar dealer in Kentucky.
Corbin?
Uh, their headquarters are low.
Yeah.
They have several stolen, several dealerships all over the state.
Caterpillar dealer.
Uh, they can bring it to Corbin for us, but they cannot deliver it in Tennessee because they are franchised in Kentucky. Stires is franchised in Tennessee.
Beautiful gig.
So they can't deliver it in Tennessee.
Jim, uh, you have a roller now?
Yes.
And, uh, is this one bigger, the one you've got is completely worn out?
The one we have was, and I think Mike, it was worn out a long time ago.
But we, we could probably still use the pets and, and you know, it won't bring any things to...
What I propose, uh, if we buy this roller, put the old one in the sale. Uh, whatever it'll bring, but, uh, every time it's left, anyway.
This is, this is what, what is this been here and you want to work out there?
That was, that was my proposal, if we get this one, then put the old one in the auction.
And the one you're looking to get, it must be trailer, everywhere, right?
Yeah, but it'll fit up, it'll, it'll work on the Bobcat trailer, lottery car, trailer, then handling.
But small, we got hands, got wheels on it, it's hydraulic, it can carry itself out of there.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, what's, make a motion, Jim.
I didn't make the motion on that.
Somebody make a motion, Gary.
Uh, I make a motion, Jim, if you get three quotes, give it to Terry. Let Terry inform you how you need to write the purchase order, because we need, these purchase orders, in some reason, some way, we're not getting them correct all the way, and Terry knows how you want them. And try, let's try our best to do them the way, keep Terry on the good side of us, the way he wants them.
It's not the way Terry wants them, it's the way that the auditors write. All the departments here know what we got, what we're supposed to do. They're bypassing it, the next time they bypass it, we, we want to do something about that.
Terry, everybody should know, every department head should know how to do a purchase order, right, Terry? And if you hear long enough, know it.
The main, the main thing is, where the confusion is, is we get the purchase orders, but if, if there's a, if there's a sealed bid coming in or a bid that the council approves, there's some confusion about where you get a purchase. You still have to get a purchase order if the council approves a sealed bid or a bid like this. That's where the part...
Who do we get this purchase order from, Mr.?
They send a requisition in, I approve it, and we can have it written in the main office.
So we need to do it the way Mr. Swett, like I said, start with, wants it done, and then it'll be done right, we all know, and Terry can lead you to, if you need to know, if you, you know, like we said. But anyway, uh, uh, Jim?
Yes.
You get the three quotes, and I, I, I want somebody to appropriate eight thousand, eight thousand five hundred dollars committed to you, that you talk to Wayne Supply and tell them that you want the machine. If it's available...
That's when I start saying the only way.
If it's available, commit yourself. If it's not, we don't need to write a check, you, uh...
That was the reason that I, in the workshop, that I threw out the ten thousand dollar number to begin with, to give me a little leeway if this one's gone. Uh, that was the reason I asked in workshop for ten, if this one's gone, try to find one comparable under ten.
I'm going to put it not to exceed ten thousand.
Thank you.
Second. Call, Rob, Joe.
You said not that?
Thank you.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Jim, could we use that patrol department staff and, uh, all this stuff? Motion carries.
Yeah.
Motion carries, okay. Now the ordinance resolutions. Ordinance twenty twelve dash zero two, ordinance amend the text and code of ordinances of the town of Pawtucket, Town Line, Chapter Eight, painting management. This will be the first and second reading, read them out.
Yeah, we, we passed the last month, I think, the final reading of the zoning change, where we changed the regulations with respect to where painting things would be. This, this ordinance is, uh, kind of similar to what we do with our build ordinances, is we regulate them as well, they have to register with us, pay the registration fee, and then we also have the, the, the rules and regulations for that painting court. So the last time you did was zoning, this is actual regulations.
Hey, what's the pleasure, council?
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty twelve dash zero two, amendment of, uh, painting, painting ordinance.
I have a motion, I say it.
Say it.
I have a second, call, Rob, Joe.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Hey, Kate, you had some things going, agenda, surplus, Kate, you done down that or not, or?
Uh, you need to make, you need a motion to declare certain items surplus, I'll get you, I don't have a list of them at this point, uh, twenty-five cars and, you know, I'll get you a list, but you just need to give, me and the department heads authorization to the...
To give a list?
To give a list, yeah. It'll be published in the paper, you will know. But can't do it unless you say we declare the following item, the items as prescribed for plus.
Uh, I make a motion that we give administrator and, and whoever he needs to, uh, the department heads to, uh, uh, get a list together and, uh, and give it to us.
Have a motion, you say it.
Say it.
Have a second, call, Rob.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, on the trucks that utilities got Kate, you want, talk back on the board. Utility trucks, Johnny's name?
Yes, uh, the utilities have an option too, make the fair and circle out of surplus, they put it in the paper. Two trucks are there that, uh, that Johnny went to see, are in much better shape than our two trucks, and although we didn't know this at the workshop, uh, they'll go pretty fast. If you could, we would like to authorize us to purchase these two trucks at eighteen hundred dollars each, that's what you negotiated, that's, that's the best price you could get.
Yeah, and those are the best trucks they've got, too.
You know, I'll be at Johnny's, he bang.
Uh, since Joseph Foreman up there, let's send him up there and talk to Kenny and see if he can give him any cheaper. Can you do that?
I'll talk to him.
Too late now, we done it.
I make, I make a motion that, that we give Johnny the authority to spend the thirty-six hundred for the two trucks.
Have a motion, you say it.
Say it.
Call, Rob.
Mr. Ballinger?
I'd like to state that I have a conflict of work for the public utilities, I vote yes.
You don't need to vote, you got your two votes.
I voted anyway.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.